Hello, everybody. Welcome to the 10:30 UED meeting on March 13, 2024. First item, I call this meeting to order. Second item is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $46,950,000 from revenue received from the sale of general obligation bonds within the 2024 GO bond funded issue two.
Well, observed, this is Jared Moore from Budget. This first action is appropriating the G O award for the improve our Tulsa three. This was the second issue and the projects in this match are listed there, but especially the inflationary spending for the improve our Tulsa one and two that all were funded pre-COVID, general street repair, and as well as there's some facilities, the Mohawk Golf Course renovations, Chamberlain, the OK improvements.
Questions from anyone? All right, moving on to item number three, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budgets transfer unencumbered and unexpendated appropriations balances of $30,307.85 between projects within the 2020 GO bond issue one subfund, $233,495.15 between projects within the 2020 GO bond issue two subfund, $5,057,167 between projects within the 2020 GO bond issue three subfund.
So this one is accomplishing several, several different projects that we're waiting for utility relocations, essentially taking money that's sitting idle and putting it towards projects that are shovel-ready at the moment. And as time passes and projects get finished, it'll get shuffled back, so all of the project's original appropriations will be met by the end of the program. It's just realigning for timing. And specifically in this one, we had discussions with Councilor Dexter Wright. Maintenance Zone 7048 is being addressed with this action, so work should be getting there soon.
Questions? These are all IOT two projects? Or Councilor?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor.
At the bottom there, the 2020 GO bond issue three subfund, which says the MLK Junior Boulevard at 36th Street North, the number is in parentheses. What does that mean?
That means that it has an available balance of that much right now, and it is being redirected to the, distributed among the three projects above it. But those three projects above it will get appropriations in the next year or so, and their appropriations will go back to restore funding to the MLK Boulevard. And the reason that's happening right now is because Public Works can't proceed with construction, because I believe it's waiting on utility relocations. So whether this action happened or not, that project would still be sitting waiting.
So you're saying they're just switching the money out?
Just switching the money out. And the money will be restored in the next years. So everything that was originally approved in the program is still getting 100% of the funding that was approved.
Anything else? All right, item number four, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $500,000 from grant revenues to be received from the United States Department of Justice within the JAG reimbursement grants subfund.
This is appropriating a national safety grant. It is being participated in by the Police Department, Department of City Experience and Public Works. It's essentially addressing pedestrian traffic in downtown entertainment zones. They'll be installing lighting, street lighting, cameras, enhanced code enforcement for graffiti abatement, and some limited ballards to protect foot traffic.
Questions? All right, item number five, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $1 million from revenue within the Public Works non-federal grants subfund.
This is recognizing and appropriating a million dollars from the counties. There are, there's an agreement that they are participating in the Boston Avenue Bridge, and so this is appropriating their portion to the project.
Item number six, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budget to transfer unencumbered and unexpendated appropriations balances of $4,903,968.71 between departments within the 2006 Special Extended Sales Tax Fund.
This one is kind of just administrative in nature. We're just moving the money from River Parks to the Department of City Experience so that they can actually manage their own contracts and pay bills. It was just there originally. This money was appropriated quite some time ago, and it's going to be used for the Route 66 interactive center, interpretive center. But DCE needs to manage the contract, so this will allow them to do that better.
Questions on this one? All right, number seven is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed District Four 2021 capital improvement sales tax community development priority project, concept plan number one, Dream Keepers Park remodel located at 1875 South Boulder Park Drive in the amount of $500,000. This is brought to us by Councilor Bellis.
Yeah, I'm really excited to get to share this project with you all. This is something that's been two years in the making from the Greater Tulsa area Indian Affairs Commission and the Parks Department to really activate and revitalize Dream Keepers Park. And the goal is to turn it into a cultural destination for Native Americans in the city. What's really exciting is this is paired up with, and there's an application process, this will all get to explain to you by someone with so many more details in a second. There's an application process, and it works for a large matching grant with the National Park Service. And there's a number of different stakeholders and things at the table, but just really excited about what this project can do, what the park can do, both for the whole city and then also especially with the SOBO district. That's really up and coming around it. It's just an exciting opportunity for a lot of investment in the area. So I'm going to invite, we have Steve Lassman from the Parks Department and Cheryl Conour with the Greater Tulsa Indian Affairs Commission with us, and Anna America, the Director of the Parks Department, who are going to be able to go over. We have full concept plans, and can talk through some of just these budget details. I wanted to make sure again, because I do view this as an amenity that is for the whole city, and so I wanted to make sure everyone knew all of the information, so I'll let you all take it away.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I'll just lead off, because Steve's doing most of the heavy lifting on this. And so two years ago, you all may remember that
We didn't introduce Cheryl. Cheryl Conour, who is with the Indian Affairs Commission, Mayor's Commission.
Yes.
And has been really initiated this project and this collaboration, so.
Never been at this table before.
For our viewers at home.
Well, two years ago, when Veterans Park moved over to the Centennial Park, the city allowed us to rename the old Veterans Park at 21st and Boulder after the Native American Community, and we chose the name Dream Keepers. And of course, we were, we do the Native American Day celebration every year for the city of Tulsa, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. We started off down at Guthrie Green, and we quickly outgrew that. So this was the perfect location for us to start having Native American Day and bring as many people as we can in to celebrate. But we noticed that the city didn't have any real place for a cultural destination for Native Americans. And so we started really looking at the park. It had seen better days, it had some deferred maintenance, and it really didn't work too well, except for the big open green space, and we love it. So we started thinking, what could we do as a commission to really kind of, you know, add a little bit of oomph to the park? And we started talking to a lot of other stakeholders and the tribes and our community members that participate with Native American Day, and talked about how we'd like to come up with a plan for the park that would really make it work for not only us, but for other festivals and events to be held down there. So the commission voted to spend some money with KKT Architects and try to get some, a park plan developed and get some drawings together. So that has kind of all taken about two years in the process. And then luckily, this past November, they announced a grant with the National Park Service through the land, Steve, I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, so there's a lot of acronyms here, but yeah, the National Park Service has its Land and Water Conservation Fund, and in the last few years, they announced a second program as part of that called the Outdoor Recreation and Legacy Partnership Grant, which provides one-to-one match of funds, including costs for in-kind funding for the project if we're awarded. So for every dollar that we spend, either in direct funding or in labor materials, then we get a federal match. So when Cheryl brought this project, we were, of course, initially excited about it and said, we don't have any funding for this right now. When this grant opportunity came up in November, we said, this seems perfect. It's a grant focused on environmental justice zones, and being in Tulsa, being completely on Indian land, we qualify anywhere in the city, so we kind of have a rare opportunity as a large city to apply for this anywhere in our city. We also reached out to a group called the Trust for Public Land, who is an outdoor recreation advocacy group out of Washington, DC, who will be providing us, who has been providing us technical assistance on this grant. We were four of about 65 projects that applied for this that got awarded their technical assistance, so there's a lot of excitement on their side. This will be the first, the first time that this grant would be used with any sort of Native American partnership, as well as the first time this grant would be applied for by any entity in the state of Oklahoma. So we think that there's a lot of positive points for this project, and that would, I think, be something that the federal government and the National Park Service would be very inclined to back.
When does it come?
It is, we submit April 30, and we find out if we were awarded in November of this year. So from November of this year to November of next year, once we find out we're awarded, we have about a year-long process to work out the funds with them, any committed funds that we can't get, we can go back and renegotiate. And then we will be given the money to start the project at the beginning of 2026.
However, we, one of the things that the commission and some of our community members have wanted us to see is progress at the park. And there are several things that we've kind of pulled out of these plans that we might be able to fundraise for individually, like in the flag monument area, and I know we'll go through these, these plans here in just a moment, but in the flag monument area, we want to direct all 39 federally recognized tribes in Oklahoma. That's something that someone else might, you know, donate to do, that we might be able to do quicker than when the grant funding might kick in, provided that we do get the grant. And some of the gardens and maybe the signage. So there are a few things that we can kind of cherry pick out of these plans that we can continue to fundraise for and maybe get started down there sooner than later. So Steve, you want to go through the plans?
Yes, yeah, if you want to go maybe to the next. So here is the proposed park, and we don't have an existing image, but if you know the park today, there's some dotted lines right there where South Boulder Park Drive exists, and there's that triangular veterans monument. We propose closing that street down and reconnecting it to the park and connecting it to that veterans monument to make that easier to access and reconnect that to the park, really get back a lot of that space that we see people crossing all the time to visit that monument, but it's very hazardous. As well, there's going to be an expanded parking lot, a small plaza area that can double as a stage setup area for events, new walking trails, native gardens. Right now, we have three that are inspired by the three tribes in which Tulsa sits, but we're still talking to see if there's any more interest in additional gardens. Around that existing veterans monument will be 39 flag poles representing the 39 tribes in Tulsa. We plan to, sorry, Oklahoma. We plan to replace the playground with a new themed playground reflective of native Oklahoma flora and fauna and sort of reflective of the indigenous nature of our city.
The monument, I'm going to back up just a minute to the street area. Why we thought it made sense to close that Boulder Park Drive is, I know you all remember that Boulder used to be one way going north and Maine was one way going south, and now that the streets are opened up with both, going both directions, it is kind of a weird configuration, and it is a little dangerous to cross right there at Boulder Park Drive. And of course, we usually block it off for Native American Day anyway, and the food trucks go there. But that would, that would be able to be a little more cohesive by pulling that back into the park area. And then as you come down Boulder, you see a little circle on that back, and that would be where we would have a Native American monument. And we would probably go out for fundraising for that independently through the native community and try to get some great-looking statue of some sort that could be lit at night that really kind of highlights the park as a cultural destination. Go ahead and go to the other pages, and we'll just walk through those. Of course, that's another different view from, you know, looking south from north. The biggest change is the inadequate parking there at the park is, just doesn't work at all for any large event, and not only would it benefit the park and any events that would use the park, it'll also benefit that SOBO district, which is just to the east of it, which has inadequate parking for a lot of those restaurants. So we've met with the neighborhood associations, we've met with a lot of the businesses in the area and talked with them, and they're excited about that because that's going to increase, you know, their values significantly and have additional parking. Okay? And that's just another view from south looking north. The tent on there is just there to represent a festival, but it really kind of doesn't change the overall view of the park other than updating the amenities there, providing for more lighting, and which is the biggest issue that you talk to anybody about that park, they said, well, it's so dark, there's no lighting, nobody goes down there at night. So that would help significantly, and we've already got AEP PSO on board with us for lighting, and they're taking a look at what it's going to take to put lighting in there now, and they'll be part of this grant process. And that's, that shows you where we were looking at just putting three gardens in right now for the three tribes that hold land base in Tulsa. We've already had the donation from the Cherokee Nation, and I'm looking and talking, getting ready to talk to the Muskogee Creek and the Osage. We've kept them apprised. We do have a member of the Muskogee Creek Nation Cultural Division that sits on our park committee, and we've already sent the information to Osage. So we're, we're well into discussions with them about, you know, helping us with fundraising for the park. And that's just an example of what it could look like. There's the Muskogee Creek one, and that would be the Cherokee. The interesting part about these gardens and the importance of them is that they will have information about each one of the tribes on a kiosk here with a QR code. So when people visit the park, they can learn a little bit about Tulsa and these three nations and even get additional information through the QR code. So it's a little bit of information and education. That's just an example of what the monument could look like, and we just stuck some feathers in there. And I'm excited about this sign, putting a large sign at the corner of 21st and Boulder that says, this is Dream Keepers Park. And the next one is the smaller sign that would be near the parking entrance. And it would, and then there's our flags, which I think will really update that monument. And of course, the Indian Affairs Commission had already selected to put on that monument the winners of the Dream Keeper Awards since they started being awarded back in the 90s in little brass plaques. So we have big plans, and that's where we had started when we first got the park named after the Native American community, was that was the one thing that we wanted to do. So they will pay for that, we'll submit that along with our grant to get matching funds for that, that cost as well.
We should also mention, we don't want to remove any of the existing monuments to the veterans there, really just adding to this. And I think, I mean, I know there was discussions, I don't know if this is planned, but also kind of something acknowledging our Native American veterans, because that was such a significant contribution in World Wars and
Right, whether you all know or not, the Native American minority community was the largest serving military group in both World War I and World War II.
So we definitely wouldn't see this as anything overriding the veterans monument in any way.
It just enhances the park. And that's just a viewpoint of the stage area. It would just be kind of a plaza area where you could put a stage on there. We're talking with some of our business, businesses in the community about individually funding that stage, you know, to enhance events at the park, which I think is great. And another view, and then that would be just that Boulder Park Drive closed off. But really, really, as Anna had mentioned in one of our meetings previously, our whole goal, not only to create a cultural destination for Native Americans, but it is really to activate the park again. And I love that word, because it, it needs to be activated. It's an older park, and it's time to kind of renovate it. It's got a real active neighborhood association, several nearby, and the up-and-coming SOBO district and the New Brute Hotel. This is a real opportunity and very timely for us to be working on this park right now. So we're, as a commission, we're real excited about it. That's kind of it.
And there has been very engaged through, I think, from the beginning with the business owners, with the neighborhood association. Obviously, one of the reasons that Dream Keepers was selected when we were originally working with the Indian Affairs Commission is because of the proximity to Council Oak, the, in Stickball Park, which are just half a block away up the hill. And so really, as Cheryl said, creating this destination, which is, it's kind of amazing that we don't have. I mean, you know, we have so many people coming here for Route 66, who I think are really deeply interested in this, and creating this space here, the combination of this and Greenwood and having two really just, I think, meaningful cultural destinations in Tulsa that really celebrate those, that history and inform and connect people to it. And especially in this case with the proximity to the river and everything that's going to be happening a few blocks away there, there's, there's a ton of opportunity not just to be a better park for Tulsa and the neighborhood around it, but as we bring visitors to Tulsa to really connect them to this heritage.
And also, the grant itself is limited to the park boundaries, but you see this, it's also having lots of other opportunities to connect to the Midland Trail, to the river, to the gathering place. I mean, this really is kind of a very central location for bike, pedestrian, car transit. It's kind of like you can access a lot of the city from this river view area.
And we will, obviously, we're very optimistic about the grant. We're getting really good feedback from both, this will work through the State Tourism Department, so from state and federal authorities, but even if we don't get the grant, we'll be moving forward with improvement. So this isn't a all or nothing. We've already committed for sure, we'll be doing playground, we'll be doing other things, and if we don't get the grant, we will continue the fundraising and the work, and it'll take longer, but we will, we'll get there.
At least the citizens will see progress, and, and the key elements, I think, that we will be able to accomplish those.
And all, that last neighborhood meeting, Counselor, that you were at, it's rare, any of you know, when you get a bunch of different people in a room together, and I kept waiting for somebody to complain about something, and that was, no, they were, in fact, everybody in there, which was a combination of business owners, small business owners, big property developers, homeowners, were all like, can we do more? Can you expand? Can you do, yeah, so.
I know people are dreaming really big, and I think that's what's been so exciting about this, is about the opportunity to, you know, honor and spotlight both the legacy and presence of Native Americans and whose land we're on, as well as just to dream big for the area, especially to me, what we could do for walkability in that area. When I think about bridging kind of those neighborhoods into downtown, it's walkable, but right now, things are in the way, and if we do something with the park like this, it could just be huge. I'll also mention, I think the only concern I heard flagged was somebody mentioned, oh, if the parking lot gets bigger, we're taking up green space. But you actually, we were able to highlight that it actually is about equal, kind of when you vacate and close off that street, you're kind of, you're offsetting that. And also with that National Park Service grant, it also has kind of a mechanism of preserving that land as green space. And so that's one of the other exciting parts to me, is making sure that we maintain and preserve the park, the monuments in it. And so I'm just excited about what this can look like for so many communities and especially our Native American ones.
Counselor.
I'm really excited by this, it looks great. I did have one question, just because it was a little hard to tell with the pictures. Right now, there's a paved circular area right by the bathrooms? Is that staying open?
That's the splash pad, the existing splash pad.
I didn't know if it was staying that way.
We would keep that, yes. That's in working order right now, so we're trying to avoid removing anything in the park that's in good condition and really just enhance what's already there. So we would want to keep the splash pad, the restrooms, I know we want to just kind of do fixture replacements and cosmetic improvements and lighting to make that restroom building a little bit more comfortable and feel safer. Splash pad would remain, the playground we're replacing.
The splash pad, is it one of those that, that you can turn off and on?
Yes, yes.
It is.
Just because so many times in the past, it hasn't been working, but we've had pagan pride there for years and years and years, and we use that circle for ritual, because it's just a really accessible place for people to stand comfortably outside, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were still going to have
Yes, yeah.
You know, a reliable space to use in that respect, because it's become kind of a really big tradition for us annually.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we see all that area as, you know, being great for the park itself, and then during events, it's a great supportive, like have a concert and let your kids run around on the playground and the splash pad, so.
It's a great park, and we love being there every year. I don't know how many years we've been there now, but quite, quite a lot. And it fits in, because so many of our pagan population is also Native American, because the spiritualities are very similar, you know, and so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to take that away.
Yeah, that's a good point. Oh, and that, that actually reminds me, Cheryl, would you mind, because I know maintenance can often be a question, would you mind speaking to, especially with the gardens, some of the, there's kind of some ingenuity there related to both sustainability and maintenance? I just realized that that should be spotlighted.
Yeah, this, because it's a land and water conservation grant, we, we're looking at any way that we can keep the maintenance low. We know from that old existing crazy-looking fountain down there in front of Spirit Bank that having a water fountain or a water feature is probably not an ideal situation, other than like the splash pad and the playground. So when we were looking at these gardens, we were trying to figure out, how are we going to maintain these gardens? And we don't want to do anything that's going to cause the park department a significant amount of maintenance issues. So we're looking at indigenous grasses and plants and, and how to water them. I said, we are so close to the river, and the river has a significance to the Native American community that we can easily put in Sandpoint wells to those gardens, and they can be pretty self-sufficient in terms of maintaining them. That also helps us in our environmental approach. We looked also at the, the running path. We wanted to develop a meandering running path so they could have 5Ks down there. So we, we have it all over the place, so it's a one-mile path, but we, we don't want it paved, so we looked at using something that was pretty porous, like crushed granite, so that it would be able to drain. And I think we're trying to take every element that we can and try to determine what's going to work best down there that's going to be low maintenance for the city. We talked with AP PSO about the lighting, at which they are looking at how to, where to put the lights, and we talked about what their standards are, like wood poles. We might want to upgrade with a steel pole or a fiberglass pole to keep the maintenance down and keep, keep them from having to be replaced on a regular basis. So we're trying to take a look at all of those areas just to keep the maintenance easy for the city, so that they really just have to kind of mow.
Nice. I'm so excited, it's so beautiful.
What else?
Exciting.
It is exciting. It is exciting.
Nothing else? All right. Item number nine.
Do you think you will say?
Thank you.
Update in discussion with Scott Marr, Metropolitan Tulsa Transit. How did I not hit eight?
Yes.
I'm sorry, number eight. Resolution authorizing a designated official to submit a joint application with the Tulsa Public Schools for the Oklahoma opioid grant award, finding extraordinary need to combat the opioid crisis in the city of Tulsa, stating an intention to convene a governance committee. This is, uh.
I'm here for it. Good morning, councilors. Um, this is the last week on your committee discussion. Um, you heard about this opioid grant opportunity with the state, and we went over the program. Um, as part of that grant, um, the governing body needs to approve a resolution, so the program is the same that you heard last week. This is us just bringing the resolution, um, forward, and it will be on your five o'clock tonight.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Now onto number nine. Update in discussion with Scott Marr, Metropolitan Tulsa Transit Authority, General Manager, always a designees on current MTTA operations. This is brought by Councillor Q.
Good morning. I brought with me Rebecca Wallner, my CFO, when I registered to the city council, and you may have heard of us this week, we've had a big week. We have a new name, Metrolink Tulsa, so we're excited to move from that, but, um, it's been six months since I last came here, so that was important to come here and give you a little update on some of the exciting things that are going on over at Metrolink Tulsa. Um, our ridership in the calendar year of twenty-twenty-three was two-point-two million.
Can you go a little bit?
Oh.
Yeah.
So our largest year of ridership since COVID. In two thousand nineteen, we're about two-point-five, two-point-six, so we're seeing a lot of our ridership come back. No big surprise of that, we've made a lot of aggressive changes, um, and our customers have responded, so exciting stuff. So far this year, in the first two months, we're up thirty percent in ridership, um, again, to a lot of the changes that we've made. I think weather's played a role as well, we haven't had much of a winter, so our ridership is up for that, so we're excited about that. Uh, microtransit, you may have heard, microtransit is, uh, is booming in Tulsa. Um, it's doubled the ridership from the routes that we replace it with, so we're excited to continue to grow microtransit. We have four daytime microtransit zones, um, so really, really excited about how microtransit's changed the way, uh, we do services here in the city. Broken Arrow is partnering with us for microtransit, and that starts next Monday. Um, they have four mockies, electric mockies and electric van, and of, we'll use our drivers to run that service, but they've, uh, really been excited about implementing microtransit, so we're excited to partner with them on that.
All right, so, uh, in the last year, we've really pushed our GoPass app, uh, between, we've done a lot of enhancements with not just being able to buy a ticket, we've also now, you can track your buses in it again, where you used to be able to, and it was kind of clunky, but that's back. Um, we've made a feature where, uh, partnering with a group called E-Alerts, where people can, if they see something going on that they need to report, they can immediately report it to us, so we can, you know, bus stop, maybe, uh, the lighting was down, the bus didn't stop, or if they thought that the bus was there, maybe the trackers didn't go right, so they can see that. They've also recently done where we can, um, do events, so if anyone has events going on that they want to use the bus service, you know, promote it through the bus service, we actually have an availability for that. Uh, we did a survey whenever, as we move into the next two topics about possibly fare capping and onboard validators, which are coming soon. So people come to our Denver Avenue Station, which I took a day in December and spent at our Denver Avenue Station, and a lot of people actually want to use their credit card onboard to just buy a pass. Um, more than I expected, honestly, and so we've actually purchased onboard about where they will be able to do so, starting in July, um, which leads us into the last one of, coming up, there'll be a proposed fare increase, but with that, I want to, we're trying to make it equitable for all. So in the research, we did, a cash-based customer is spending on average seventy dollars a month, and that could be because they can't buy a pass upfront, because maybe that's just not how their budgeting works. So they're spending almost a double the amount of someone who can afford a month-long pass. We're trying to make it equitable for everybody, and so with that, we're going to introduce fare capping. So no customer should be paying more than a day pass when they ride our buses more than twice. So it would be an increase where currently it's a dollar seventy-five, the increase is only a quarter for an individual ride, which puts it at two dollars, but you'll never pay more than four dollars. So it makes it easier for them to ride the bus all day long. So even though it seems like an increase, most people are already spending well over four dollars a day, which this will actually offset that.
If I can add, we see a lot of cities do this, and it really works well. Um, I'm being told it'll hit the mayor's desk next week, and it'll come to city council on March twenty-seventh.
I just want to thank you, since you've taken over. I know my customers are a lot more content. That used to be a number-one call with my constituents with disabilities. I know we, they're still a little kink that we're working out with some of our visually impaired, but thank you for supporting veterans, for supporting people with disabilities, because, you know, until I really got involved, I didn't see how important that was for my visual impaired people to get to their doctors, and this is their only transportation. And I just want to compliment Scott that I had an issue with the new app. He brought the whole team out to one of our senior centers and taught the seniors, taught the people with visual impairment to, to work the app, and.
On top of that, um.
Now we just need more sched, more on, times on the schedule, because I think that's our biggest, because so many people are using the app, it's hard to get those booking times.
So the current app, uh, which is the Tulsa Transit app, we're actually going to be migrating that all into our actual GoPass app. So it wouldn't matter if you are a, um, paratransit customer, a microtransit, or a fixed route, everybody will have the exact same.
One-stop.
One-stop app shop in our app, so instead of having two apps, it'll be.
We might have to go back out, just for our seniors.
Oh, yeah, we can never do enough.
But I, I'd love to thank you, how you care about our city, and you just come in with guns a-blazing, so thank you.
I'm only as good as the team that I surround myself with, so I got to give them a lot of the credit.
Yeah, well, it is your team, too, thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Um, two questions. One, related to the microtransit, I remember early on during maybe the initial, uh, was it the Northeast pilot, that there were certain trends related to, most people were getting rides to maybe it was like the grocery store and church. Do you all still have trends about what are most people, like, or like, if you have just general trends or information for the broader service, like where are people using it to go to? Is it like healthcare, is it?
Yeah, it's hard to figure out where exactly they're going, other than, we know that they go to the casino. We know that there's, there is a lot of data for that.
That's fair.
Um, but to know that they go to healthcare, it's really hard to really drill into that. We can see where they get picked up and dropped off, but we have, with, with our app, or with our, um, software that we use, we have a lot of data to show us whether it makes sense. And, you know, one of our struggles and, is Zone Nine, and Councillor Patrick was a real proponent to get a vehicle out there, and we're not giving up on it. It started off slow, we have our, our mobility coordinator going out to that area to try to really promote that. Um, we're not giving, I promise you, we're not giving up on it today, it's just off to a slow start, just a couple people a day, um, as of now, but I think, um, we're going to give it some time.
We're also starting a marketing campaign, that's she's putting live today.
And maybe we need to ride the bus, Phil and I have been on there, got a lot of video.
Yeah. We'd love to have you.
We need to.
I'll drive it.
Okay. We'll get that set up.
Seat belts on the bus?
Is it possible?
Seat, no, I'm good driving.
Is it possible for us to see some of the, I'd be curious too, where like the microtransit, you know, where riders are coming, is that something that you'd be able to share with the council? Or we could even see just like, you know, who from our district, what kind of outreach? And then is there a sort of point where you're like, okay, we're doing so much microtransit in this area, we'd like, it would be more cost-effective to have a line? Maybe that's never the case, I'm just curious, like how that works.
You know, the purpose, you know, it's for, you know, first and last mile when it comes to the microtransit, but, you know, when we see service go up, we, we probably need to think about adding vehicles in that area, because, because a fixed route is north and south or east and west, microtransit's in a zone, can go just about anywhere. Um, I, I tell my team, that's a good problem to have when you have so many customers, because we'd be having another conversation if we didn't have those customers. We're having so much success with it, you see Broken Arrow, Sand Springs is talking to us, um, there's just nothing, there's just endless opportunity, but we can share that information with the council.
Yeah, I think that would be maybe just interesting for folks to see. And then, um, other question off of microtransit, Eleventh Street Rapid Transit, how's, I know that there's a funding gap.
Yeah, there is a current funding gap, but we just got the raise grant in at the end of February. We should hear back from that in the next couple months.
Submitted. Raise grant submitted, yeah. Don't get it.
Yeah, it's already been submitted, yes.
Okay.
And, and we feel pretty confident with it, we got a lot of support from senators, and, um, yeah, so we got that in, and we'll hear back from that. I think I told you April, I misspoke, it's in June.
Okay.
We do have FDA support on that as well.
That's exciting.
They come out to, they come out and they know that Route sixty-six with the, the hundred-year anniversary coming up, it's a big deal, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we definitely also want to, I just love the opportunity to connect like East Tulsa across the whole corridor, so, okay, that's exciting. Thank you.
Counselor Frederick.
So, yeah, I know that it's a struggle. Um, part of the issue, I think, for a lot of the people there is that you can't go outside of the zone, and when you have a district like mine that doesn't have a lot of amenities, they have to go across those zone lines, and so it doesn't necessarily help them to get up, I mean, they can finally get on a bus, but it doesn't go anywhere they need to go.
I understand.
Um, and so I, I don't know how to fix that problem. I don't know where the connector points would be, where they could get on a, another bus or something. I know that microtransit is, is really just supposed to be that last mile, but if there's no resources within the zone for them to go to, then it's still not really helpful.
We're looking at other opportunities to improve it. We've added the zoo and the airport to it. Um, yeah, you know, with microtransit, we want, we want to pick them up and take them to a fixed route as much as possible unless they live in that zone, but again, we're not giving up on it, I want you to know that. I, I heard you loud and clear in the last couple years about getting service out there, and we're, we're trying, we're really trying.
Thank you. And if, if I can help, if you, if it would.
Absolutely.
Do you think it would help for me to come ride it, or do a video, or whatever? I'm happy to do that.